So, here we go. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Mike Clark, Council President. For those watching at home, the mayor is not able to attend today as she is at a rail conference and doing a good deal of work on high-speed rail, and so I get to sit in her place today. We have a couple of things on today's agenda, and we'll start with committee reports and items of interest from mayor, council, and city manager. And as the mayor often starts this, I'll begin, I suppose, by saying that I had a meeting on the 9th with a number of residents who live around the Oakway Golf Course about an application for an AT&amp;T cellphone tower that has been made to be installed on Oakway Golf Course, and their concerns about that, and met with a member of the city's planning staff to help inform those residents and help them understand what's contained in the application and how they can participate in the process if they have concerns. Met on the 10th with the president of the Santa Clara Community Organization to update him on some of the things that we're doing in and around in Vision Eugene, and to have him update me on some things that the neighborhood is working on around refinement planning and other items of interest from that community. Last night I had the chance to attend the one of two 4J kind of public hearing, public events around the superintendent's plan to cut $30 million from the budget, and what that looks like and the impacts on 4J School District. There were probably, as you may have seen in the paper, there were probably 200, 300 people there with a lot of concerns, and so I'm happy that the school district is hearing what people think of the proposal. They're going to make a final decision in January, they're going to look at a refined proposal here in December, once they get the public input, which I think lasts until the 23rd of November. For those that want to have input on the superintendent's plan, there's, I believe, a website where you can go to fill out a survey. Want to remind people that the Police Commission meets in this room on 18th, on Thursday, and I'll be at that. So with that, George?
I'll pass.
Jennifer?
Pass also.
George?
Thank you. I went to a Human Rights Commission meeting last night, and this week is Transgender Awareness Week, and there was a panel of five transgendered people just talking about their lives and afterwards their question-answer period. People were asking questions. It became apparent, I didn't know this, but apparently the medical care is a big-time problem here because a lot of the procedures that they need are not covered by the health plan. The medical profession is not, I won't say not sympathetic, the nurses are apparently. The nurses are very understanding and very knowledgeable. Most doctors are not. And it's very hard to find an endocrinologist. It's very hard to find a psychiatrist. Apparently you have to go to psychiatrists before they can get further help. So, there's problems. It was very interesting to hear about that, I had no idea. Tomorrow night is the Police Commission meeting. We'll be going over a couple more of the use-of-force reporting policy, and there'll be an information session about CIT training that they're all getting now, so I look forward to that. I'd like to learn more about that. I guess that's about it.
Andrea?
Thank you, Mike. So, I was able to attend the mayor's roundtable on the BRT, and it was pretty well-attended. I think it was pretty well-done. There was a lot of people out protesting up in front, and they were invited to come in, but I guess they chose not to come in and join the conversation. On November 11th, I had the opportunity to speak to the ONA District 5, the Nursing Union, about, not necessarily the disparities in healthcare for Latinos, but just about cultural competency, and I was really, I felt very honored to be able, to be invited to do that and to be able to share my perspective. With that, I also want to send out a word of solidarity to the nurses that are striking over in Springfield. And also, this Saturday, the Tree Foundation is going to be planting trees along Bethel Drive, and you're all invited. It kicks off at 9:00. I think the mayor's going to be there, and Brock Nelson, who is the PR person from the Union Pacific. And we're going to end the day at Oakshire, one of the local businesses. They are going to be hosting the event afterwards. They're going to, you know, there are going to be tents set up at their business, and people will be encouraged to stop by and to join. And I think that is, oh, and I, we did, I had an ABRAPA meeting yesterday with the staff. We're looking at their policies around their personnel review. We're trying, we're kind of systematically going through a lot of different issues around personnel and around budget and just around the workings of the organization itself. So, if you want more information on that, I'll be glad to share.
Thanks, Alan.
Yeah, I attend a couple of neighborhood meetings and other meetings. The South University Neighbors Meeting, the meeting was exclusively about dealing with youth and parties and the impact that has on their livability in that neighborhood. It's a very big issue for those folks and continues to be with regard to noise and parties late and a disturbing thing, what they referred to as marauding bands of youth that kind of wander through in these packs, and they're very intimidating, especially if you're walking around, if you're a single female at night, that's extremely intimidating. And we're trying to figure out what to do about those kind of issues and what to do about the different parties. So, EPD was there, as well as a whole bunch of other folks, myself included, working on this issue. So, more to come, working on some good solutions, I think. Last night, attended the Fairmont Neighborhood Association meeting. A big part of it was, well, there are two things on your agenda. One was a history project, about oral history, about some of the parts of that neighborhood that were, that was a neighborhood grant, which is kind of fun and great for the history of the city of Eugene because that's one of the older neighborhoods in the city. But the bulk of it was about the arena parking district and explaining it and making sure that people got all their questions answered. It is kind of complicated, but it's also a very, very necessary thing since there's going to be as much as 200 events a year, which is two out of three days. So, I also attended the Amazon Neighbors. They had a really interesting panel that talked about how to meet your neighbor, like sharing tools and just all these really just creative ideas, going on bike rides, walking through your neighborhood, get a dog because you always meet everybody when you walk up a dog. So that was excellent as well. Went to City Club and heard Ron Chase talk about the new sponsors building and the program they're doing. They just opened their new building on Highway 99, just north of Roosevelt, which is a spectacular facility.
In my word.
Overnight success in 20 years it took Ron to do that, but it's really a very cool facility for people getting out of prison and trying to start their lives over again, and they do really excellent work. Also attended E-Web at large, or the large customer meeting and heard what they had to say. And tonight, Sustainability Commission here in this room, 5:30 to 8:30, talking about land use and transportation and also the car-sharing policy, which will come to the council in December. And then Lower Hill Valley Citizens Thursday at 7:00 at the Korean Church. And I also got to attend the Cal-Oregon game down in Berkeley, which was really interesting. Talk about, a bazillion people trying to cram into one little space and get in and out of there is just kind of amazing because it's nowhere, it's right on campus, so it's not like Otzen where it's built up, but fortunately.
Who are you rooting for?
Congratulations, both were my alma mater, so you don't have to say it. You're on videotape, yeah.
Don't feel any pressure at all.
I was rooting for Oregon.
Thanks, Alan. Chris?
I don't have anything right now.
Eddie?
Thank you. I was also at that City Club meeting, but I think I talked about it last time we had items, but I agree that Ron Chase has done wonderful work and still is until he leaves. I was at the Transportation Summit, and there was, it was interesting, quite a crowd. I also talked to some of the people who were outside. They had, as everyone knows, there are many people who are still very concerned about NIMEX on West 11th, and I'm still getting telephone calls. It came up at the, at one of the neighborhood meetings, too. I've attended two neighborhood meetings in the last week, a week and a half or something. They were both very well-attended, Southeast Neighbors. Kevin is continuing to do something like the Envision Eugene meetings, and so we had the second session of that. And people do appreciate being in small groups and talking to each other rather than listening to speeches all the time, I think. And it's, they, our neighborhood is, the Southeast neighborhood is pretty, they're pretty much in agreement on a lot of things, and they don't know why we have to expand the UGB, and they are very concerned about protecting farmland, at least the ones I've heard express opinions. And then Crest Neighbors met last night, elected officers, and talked about what they want to talk about in the future, but they, I suggested they invite the police auditor for one thing, and they're thinking about that, I think, but they have decided to reduce the number of meetings. Southeast only has four general meetings a year already, and Crest has been having one every month except July and August, I think. And they've decided that that's too many, and they're going to reduce it to six and have two of those be socials instead of just meetings, and that sounded like a good idea. But both of those neighborhood meetings were, had good attendance, and I think that's promising. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
I forgot one thing. The Oregon Climate Summit, which is being put on by the Oregon Department of Transportation, OMPAC, which is the Oregon MPO, is going to be here Friday all day at the Eugene Hilton. I think it runs from 9:00 to 4:00, and the national experts talking about local, talking about climate change and strategies for reducing emissions from transportation and land use.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, oh, sorry.
You can sign up. Just one item. You know, Monday, we're having a joint meeting with the city council and the Planning Commission to talk about Envision Eugene, and so just to kind of give you a heads-up, it's scheduled to go from 5:30 till 8:00, and then there still is some work after that with some action to include your public hearing on your downtown public safety area. So it'll be a busy evening. Just kind of a heads-up, we may have that first meeting more in our circle format. We'll probably include or ask a couple of the CRG members to join us so they can give you a little bit of a perception of what's going on from their perspective. So, we haven't nailed down those details, but just to kind of give you a heads-up, we may actually remove the tables and have a conversation that way as we go. One of the pieces that will, I see Betty's excited about that. No dots, however, so you're safe. And then one of the things that I'll be talking about in that meeting is just trying to foreshadow a little bit about a framework for February on some of the things that we'll be asking you to consider as we go, not the specifics, but the framework so far, so that'll be a piece of that. So, just as a heads-up.
Thank you, sir, very much. This point on the agenda, we have it listed that we'll go into executive session. Following that, we'll come back into regular session and have our last item on the agenda, which is the Police Auditor's Annual Performance Review. And in going to executive session, I get to read the script. It says, "The Eugene City Council will now meet in executive session to review and evaluate the job performance of an employee. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192.660-2I. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room." So, we'll be back after this.
And I think I might.
Thank you very much. I'm going to call us back into open session now, and our agenda item is the review of the police auditor. And Alana, would you like to do a precursory piece here?
Yes, I will. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Alana Holmes, Human Resources Director for the city of Eugene. Today, we are here in work session with the council coming out of executive session to discuss the First Annual Performance Evaluation Review of Police Auditor Mark Gissner. I believe at this point, the council will open up for their comments, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Alana, very much. What I'm going to do first is read a statement that I have here from the mayor, and then we're going to go with the queue that we have set up here, which goes Andrea, Chris, me, and then George Poling at the moment. Okay, and now Alan. What I have from the mayor that she asked be read here in open session says that Mark's worked hard, and things seem to be going reasonably well. That's saying a lot, she said. "We need to keep going. I particularly appreciate his attention to improvements in canine oversight and high-speed apprehensions. I urge continued work on training and crisis management." She asked that that be shared here in her absence. We'll go with the queue. Andrea?
Thank you, Mike. So, Mark, I'd like to say in open session that I really appreciate the work you've done and brought to the community. I think you've led a stabilizing of the program as I envisioned it, and I really do appreciate it. With that said, you had alluded to, or you had said that there was the challenge of community thinking that this was an advocacy program for community members when they have issues with the police, and I just kind of want to pick your brain a minute and ask you what you think, or if you think there is a role within the CRB, HRC, or PC to talk about some level of program. Historically, there had been a program within the Human Rights Commission that they actually had police training to be advocates for people when they were challenged to understand the system, and they were laypeople, and it was very clear that they were not attorneys and that they were not there to tell the people how to plea or any of that, but they basically spoke. They went through police training, and they understood, you know, the realm, they were volunteers, and so they were trained. But I'm just curious, you know, this, with the public safety zone downtown, that's one of the things that have come up, is the fact that there are, there's challenges for the group of people that were identified, that they perhaps don't have the knowledge or the know-how to navigate the system. And I think that a lot about our community, you know, in, if you don't have a lot of contact with the police, which a lot of people don't, when they do get involved, it's challenging for them to understand the nuances. So I'm just curious if you see that, how you would see that if there was a program that would look like an advocacy that were laypeople and that were volunteers?
I think it's, I think it's a great idea. Any advocacy program, whether it's involving police or the court system, would be helpful for folks because, again, as you stated, most of them don't have the familiarity with the system, whether that is currently the role of the ACLU or whether it's the current role of the Human Rights Commission. I'm not sure that I'm in a position to judge specifically what that group is, but certainly those kinds of things I've seen have been very successful in other cities. We try to help people if they come in, if they don't understand the system, if they have a complaint against the police, we certainly intake that, we make sure it goes through the process. If they don't understand the system, based on our knowledge of the criminal justice system, we try to help them as much as possible. But certainly, anything else out there in the community to help folks navigate through sometimes bureaucratic red tape would always be helpful for us.
And I just wanted to also comment while I have a minute left. I really do appreciate you working on the pursuit policy. That is, that was an issue in my neighborhood, and I, there was a lot of comments around it, so I'm glad to see that it's risen to the level of the policy getting revised and, you know, more eyes looking on the problem. So I just really thank you for that.
Thank you, Andrea. Chris?
I want to echo Andrea's point that you've brought a lot of stability to the audit function. I think that's very important, and I think you understand what your job is, and I think that's a very important consideration. And you also recognize that how you do it is just as important as what it is you do because you're often judged by the way in which you perform your job, and I think you've done that very well in terms of trying to forge relationships with all of the different people that you have to work with. I recognize that at a fundamental level, your job is really about the behaviors of officers or other people during, during their activities, during their job. But then it's related to the policies that are in place that either encourage or discourage the behavior that we want or don't want within the department. So, well, you're really not involved in deciding whether a person is guilty or not guilty of the crime they may have been accused of. You really are involved in whether or not the way that went, whether the behaviors that were involved in that were done appropriately and effectively into policy. And I recognize that you are dealing with the, with the challenging issue of helping the police department to determine whether their policies help or hinder the most effective behavior, and that's kind of an added part of your job, and I think the degree to which you work with the police on that is really critical, and I think you've done a good job. Once again, back to the notion of working with the police and not against the police, I think is really the key here. So in all of those dimensions, I think you've done a really good job. You have brought the auditor's office to a place that it really needs to be, and I think from here, it can really start to get the traction that it needs. So I really commend you on a job well-done.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. I'll say that I echo the comments made so far. I'll say that as someone who's worked very closely with you as officer on the council to work in direct supervision for your tenure here, last year and a half, I find you to be terribly, terribly competent in what you do. Very good, and I, terribly competent. All right, let's try better words. Let's say it this way. I've marked in each category of the analysis of your work that you've exceeded my expectations. Reason I've done it is because some of the things that were mentioned, you've brought a stability to the auditor's office that allows it to be less controversial and more effective. The job, and the reason we put this into play, was to ensure and to build and rebuild, in some cases, trust between the police department and the community for us to have a good oversight model. And I think you've, your competence and your experience has helped raise the level of the performance of that office. Exceptionally happy with that. And I also put into your evaluation that the surprising part for me is how far that you have come in this amount of time. You've been able to accomplish more than I had expected in a much quicker time than I thought was possible. And so, for that reason, when we get to the decision-making around compensation, I wanted to say in public session that, like the city manager and the other executives, I'd be in favor of a cost-of-living adjustment that is like that they experienced that would take place beginning in January. And I'd say that I would, because you've exceeded expectations and reestablished this office in an effective way, I would be in favor of a step increase because of that exemplary work. I typically wouldn't because of the economic condition that we're in, and in all other years, would probably want to keep things as they are. But as your first review, as someone who's come in and established himself so well and taken the office so far and exceeded expectations so much for me, I would be in favor of doing that. Next, I have George Poling.
Before we get going on that, the comparison sheet that you handed out, Alana?
Yes.
Next time, if you could maybe include our information on there so we can look at it and compare it?
Okay.
And then the city's populations that you used, and the size of either the police department or the county sheriff or whatever it is. Give us an idea of the different sizes of the community and things.
Okay, we'll do that.
As I said earlier, Mark, you know, you came into this position at a really rough time in the, in the growth of the office of the police auditor. I have marked you mostly meets expectations because based on the information that we had about you coming into this job, based on your interviews and the discussions that we had with you, I had some pretty high expectations, and you've met those. I, you know, I couldn't ask for a better person in the position. You came in, you straightened out the office, you don't have a personal agenda other than making the office function as it should, which I believe you've got it well on that path. You've had to make some hard decisions about how you're going to run that office, and I think you've done an excellent job. And I have no complaints about the job you're doing. I think because of the way you've performed your job, you have actually instilled trust and confidence back into the office of the police auditor by the community as well as the police department. And also, I think the community is starting to, parts of the community are starting to rebuild the trust in the police department because of the work that you're doing with Chief Kearns and his people and the community itself. So I'm very pleased with what I've seen this past year, and I'm sure we'll just see nothing more but a steady improvement and outstanding work from you, and thank you for the work you've done.
Thanks, George. Alan?
Overall, Mark, then, you've done an excellent job as the police auditor. You exceeded my expectations. My future best outcome when we hired you was to have the police auditor's office become business as usual and to have it become a non-controversial position and get off the front page of the paper, and all of those have occurred and faster than I expected them to. The office is now operating as it should, and I think you, Mark, you do even-handed job of handling complaints and their disposition. You're not a rubber stamp for the police actions, nor are you an antagonist to them. The role of the police auditor's office, as I see it, is to provide a place and a process to complain about the Eugene Police Department and the actions that they take against our citizens, but at that point then become, to help people navigate what I think is an intimidating and complex process, and then to be an impartial investigator and adjudicator of those complaints. Not to be an advocate for those people, but to be impartial and a helper through to navigate through the process, and I think you've done that really well and brought that to be the hallmark of the office. Office has become more professional and more respected with EPD and think within the community. Numerous people come up to me and say, "I'm impressed you were with you." And I think it's also a result of the maturation of the process with respect to the police union and them getting used to the fact that the office is going to be here and not going to go away. And so all those things combined, I think, has made this process now work the way that I think it was intended and the way I think it should the very first. So, all in all, I think you handled the replacement of the assistant police auditor very well. I appreciate the changes that you've made and instituted or started within the police department on policies and training with respect to search and seizures, vehicle pursuits, use of canines, and also just basic customer service. And I very much appreciate your outreach to the community, going out to the neighborhood associations and the different groups, and I very much appreciate your plans to increase that outreach. I asked Councilor Taylor if she was going to make a motion for increasing compensation. She wasn't, so I'll take the liberty and do so. So I would like to move that we grant the police auditor a step increase from step three to step four, retroactive to its higher anniversary date, and a COLA of 2%, which is the same as the exact managers or non-representative employees, starting January 1, 2011.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. I have, I'm going to keep the queue, and George, I'm going to add, George Brown, I'm going to add you in round one here, so I'm going to go to Jennifer unless you'd like to speak to the motion.
I support it.
I think he did.
Okay, Jennifer.
Don't give him any more.
Everyone who makes a motion has the right to do it. Yeah, I've got Betty in the queue. Betty's after Jennifer.
I will say that I will support the motion, and I just quickly wanted to say thank you, Mark, for all your work. You are exactly what we needed right when we needed it, and we're lucky to have you.
Thank you. Succinctly said. Betty?
Well, I would like to say first that the two previous auditors had a difficult time because it was a new position, and there were difficult times with getting the police union to accept it, and part of the change is time. And part of the change is, I'm not saying you're not doing a good job. Mostly, I do have a criticism, but part of it is time and part of it is the gender of the person. We had two women in that position before this, and I think anybody knows that that makes some difference in their acceptance by male groups. But...
Sorry?
[laughing].
Sorry?
[laughing].
Sorry?
Actually, I've just been reading a lot of books from the police, some Joseph Wambach books about the police and, and by a former policeman, which have this reinforced what I'm saying, actually. Not that they don't have a really rough job, but there is, there is a gender thing there. I do have one big, I only attended one CRB meeting, and at that one, I was very disappointed that, and that's what I wrote in my written work, we've seen that already, but that there was a really egregious example, I think, and of a police wrong behavior, and that you rigidly stuck to the time thing, that the time of the complaint was a little later than it should have been. And I would like to see some flexibility when there is a reason for it. Other, other ways, I think you've been very flexible and very courteous and, and good to the council and with the community, with the bigger community. As I said before, in executive session, though, I would like to know more about the point of view of people who have made complaints, as well as, I know the police are happy, but, but we're, we're there to serve the people who are helpless and who need a place to make complaints. And I was going to make a motion, Alan, but I was going to make a motion to do the same with the COLA as with the executives, and considering our really difficult financial situation to start the next step in, on January 1st, to advance the next step effective January 1st also. But your motion's already on the table, so.
Okay. Thank you, Betty. I'm sure the women in the Eugene Police Department will be interested to know if you think they work in a men's organization.
I bet they know it.
George Brown?
Thank you. I just wanted to speak to the, I will support the COLA, that's no problem. I just think, you know, we haven't seen the new budget yet. The, the step increase right now, not that I think you're doing a good job, I think I'll vote against that. I'd like to wait on that another year or so personally. So, that's all.
Okay. George Poling?
Well, with all due respect, Betty, Joseph Wambach wrote books about police work in the 70s and 80s. I cut my teeth in police work in 1972. I have seen the world of police work transition from an all-male organization to where it's integrated into no longer a male-dominated profession. You look around the nation at all the chiefs now and all the sheriffs now that are female. You know, 20, 30 years ago, you wouldn't have seen that. And I just believe that, that because a person was a female that had the position before is not the reason why it didn't succeed. Part of it was because it was a new office here in the city, and it wasn't totally accepted, granted by the, the police department. In fact, it wasn't totally accepted, although it was overwhelmingly voted for, it wasn't totally accepted by the members of our community. It's just that I think the personalities that we had in that office to start off with did their best, it just wasn't working, and for whatever reason, they've moved on, and fortunately, we found somebody of Mark's, Mark's qualifications and caliber. But I think to say that it's a gender-based occupation is, is wrong, and I think it's, like Mike says, I think you'll find a number of the female officers here at the Eugene Police Department that would probably disagree 100% with you.
Yeah, and I want to insert myself here just to say, I probably shouldn't make a snide remark like that, but I do want to say, Betty, that I do take exception to that because I think that, that diminishes the, the folks who serve in our department in a way that I have a challenge with. I think that the reason that there's broad acceptance has less, quite a bit less, if nothing to do with gender so much as it has to do with Mark's competency at doing his job, and, and I appreciate that about Mark. Alan?
Well, I think that if you believe that the gender of the previous two police auditors had nothing to do with the way things went, I think that's kind of naive, but. Question for Alana. The executive managers delayed their increase to January 1, 2011, and that's consistent with what the motion is, is that correct?
That's correct.
So we're doing exactly what we did with the executive managers are doing, so that's the same. And did we do a freeze with regard to step increases anywhere else in the organization?
This fiscal year?
Yeah.
Non-reps, took a freeze last year, not this year, and the COLA's in the contract. I believe we're FY '10-based. I don't-
I meant step increase to COLAs.
Oh, steps.
Just step increases.
Steps.
Yeah. Did we freeze anybody in the organization at all?
Not, not merit.
So, George, if we did this, we would single Mark out as the only person in the whole organization that would get a step freeze, which I think would be very inappropriate. So I'll support the motion.
Anyone else? We have a motion in a second on it on the table. All those in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, all those opposed to two. Motion carries. With that, we end our business for the day and thank all of you for coming.